Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Board has already participated in a closed security session and will now move to our workshop, followed by a special meeting and our final budget adoption at 5:05 time certain. I now call the workshop to order at 3:44 PM. Mrs. Bass, please call the rule.
District one, Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District two, Alexandria Ayala.
Here.
District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District seven, Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We have quorum with all seven Board members in attendance. Also joining us is Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Theresa Michael, and Board Clerk Carol Bass. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the Superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All Board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900 or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124, pound sign. This meeting is being transcribed by a closed captioner. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to be led by Inspector General Theresa Michael?
Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, start your workshop.
Yes, Chairman Barbieri. Today's workshop is my colleague, Ms. Sean Bernard's Office of General Counsel annual report, so I will yield the floor to our General Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and esteemed Board members. It is my pleasure and honor to present to you my first annual report highlighting the amazing work and accomplishments of the Office of General Counsel for FY '21. While most of you have known me for many years, I am grateful and humbled that you selected me to serve as your chief counsel and pilot, so to speak, to navigate the Board through the many rich and unsettled waters we have encountered together this past year. I am also beyond grateful to be in a position to lead an amazing group of legal professionals and staff. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you, district team members, who have made this experience something I look forward to each and every day. The three Cs is what we call them. The 2021 fiscal year has presented quite a few challenges, changes, and of course, COVID-19. The OGC has battled these Cs with a lot of hard work, flexibility, and innovation. I am excited to present to you the highlights from our office. Our team of 16 lawyers, seven paralegals, five assistants have been busier than ever this past year, shifting all of our operations to remote work when the district facilities shut down due to COVID, and then seamlessly shifting back into the office when it was time to return. I am extremely proud of the multi-tiered rotating approach that our office created to ensure a safe return to the OGC suite for all of our staff. Many other departments modeled their measured return after ours, and we were happy to support and advise in those efforts. In addition, as you can see, the work has never ceased with over 26,000 attorney hours worked and hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings to our district. One of our goals this year was to maintain continuity, continuity of services, and to keep the Board informed, aim at the changes and challenges ahead. I will admit that upon stepping into this role, I was a little uncertain about the prospect of doing more with less. How on earth, I thought, am I going to be able to do my previous role and this one? We have made it work. Through teamwork and sheer nimbleness, we have continued to bring you, the Board, high-quality information and guidance as quickly as we receive it. And I don't have to go through with you the many mechanisms that we have in place to make sure that we get you the information that you need to know what's going on at all times. And the same can be said for the critical support we provided to the Superintendent and his executive leadership team through the many different reporting mechanisms that we have in place. Another goal of our office this review period was to remain proactive in our approach to legal matters. We do this through various means, including the development of training resources for principals, administrative assistants, and other district personnel. We review contracts, and I think you saw over 1,000 of them, and other documents for legal sufficiency, as well as participate in various meetings so that we are able to provide relevant feedback and guidance. We have a very active OGC hotline, and we receive duty calls very often, and we handle those effectively and efficiently in order to assist our schools with immediate legal COVID-19 and its impact. It has had quite an impact on all of our departments, and the legal department is no exception. Its impact has been widespread and far-reaching, but the OGC has persevered and worked diligently to stay on top of the latest updates and provide legal guidance to the administration. We, as you can see, have participated in state and national work groups. We have played a pivotal role in the creation and implementation of COVID-19 protocols and policies for students, employees, visitors, and of course, our very own Board and Board meetings. We have provided critical legal advice, as you can see, with respect to remote work and the return-to-work guidelines, student enrollment guidance, FERPA, IDA/EA requirements during COVID-19, student promotion and placement and graduation, and those are just to name a few. Even with the challenges and the changes presented this year, including the need to move from remote work and then to return to the main building, the OGC has maintained its commitment to excellence and stability of operations. In an effort to stay connected, we have held weekly virtual staff meetings, as well as content area-specific meetings that added in our ability to provide comprehensive supports. Mid-year and annual evaluations were also conducted to ensure that we hold everyone accountable and track our own progress. This year, we also remain committed to our initiatives, including diversity, making data-informed decisions based on trend analysis, and continued professional development such as the CLEs that we attend. This is our team and our office structure. As you can see, the litigation, once led by me, is one of our largest groups in the Office of General Counsel. I want to personally thank Mr. John Bell, an attorney, Jean-Marie Middleton, for stepping in and stepping up to assist me in making sure that our litigation matters continue to run smoothly, along with my continued oversight. Other highlights, as you can see here, include savings on our outside counsel fees, in-house attorney hour savings, and our participation as presenters on several panels to include our work and continued work with the Palm Beach Lakes Law Academy, the 2021 Altogether Now Conference, which provides legal updates to LGBTQ+ matters impacting school students, public school students, as well as employees. I fully enjoyed participating in that conference and even got to see some of our very own Board members as presenters. A very rewarding experience, and I was happy to see that our team was actively supporting all of those efforts, as well as our participation with the Council of Great City Schools regarding ESE compensatory education and COVID-19. Another highlight and new experience for me this year was being able to participate in many of our high school graduations, and I'm actually wearing one of the, I'm admitting, one of the masks that I received from one of the graduations. But I enjoy switching those out, and I enjoyed that experience greatly. It was very rewarding, and I understand the importance of representation and house for so many of our students. If they can see it, they can achieve it. I look forward to this experience again this year and making it a tradition that I attend. One of the things I wanted to highlight for the Board is our selection as a bellwether plaintiff in the dual vaping litigation. That cannot and should not be understated. In February, our district was selected by the judge as part of the initial group of schools and other government entities to serve as bellwether cases. Palm Beach County was selected, along with three, just three, other school districts across the country. I believe San Francisco and Kansas were among the group. The plaintiff steering committee vetted all of the potential plaintiffs carefully and came away with an extremely favorable view of Palm Beach County. They saw that the district's leadership role over many years in combating youth tobacco and substance abuse was key. So yes, it has been a tough year, and yes, February seems like almost a lifetime ago, but this is a huge victory and accomplishment that all of us can and should be proud of. What better face than Palm Beach County to represent the many schools that have been impacted by the youth vaping epidemic? And my team has been right there, working alongside our counsel and the district's team to see this through to a successful end for all of our students. Training, training, and...
Mrs. McQuinn has a question.
I'm so sorry. I was getting your attention for when she finishes.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Training, training, and more training. Training is something we take great, great pride in, in the OGC. We heard the call for more training, and we were more than happy to answer the call. Based on our proactive approach to addressing legal matters, we were able to develop and offer training opportunities and resources for personnel across the district in a virtual format, and that is very tricky to do. We delivered our annual training to over 100 administrative assistants in conjunction with the Office of Professional Growth, as well as conducted training for principals and assistant principals on FERPA and ESE issues. We continued with our Legal Brief podcast release in a mini-series to address issues related specifically to COVID-19, and we made resources available to school leaders. There is always a call-out for our training materials, and we are constantly doing what I like to call "house calls." That's when a principal contacts our office and says, "Can you come on over and offer us some training?" And we are always happy to answer that call. We also offered the releases in video format, and so you see up there on the screen, not my best picture there, but that's one of the still shots of one of the trainings that we've done. And there's another one down there that you can't really see, but we've done a couple of different trainings, and those are the still shots of the virtual trainings that we offered this year. Finally, we published, as we always do, our Legally Speaking newsletter containing pertinent information for school leaders to operate in a legally compliant manner. And as I bring this in for a landing, with an eye toward fiscal year 2022, we want to continue to be proactive, productive partners with the Board and district, and working to pragmatically problem-solve and provide legal support in all that we do. And finally, as the little show that's out there is called "This Is Us," this is us. This is your legal team here to serve all of your legal needs. Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent and School Board, for your indulgence. This will conclude my remarks for the OGC's FY '21 annual report. Thank you to my team, which is listening, I know they are. Thank you, OGC team, for all of your hard work, and there's a little saying in our office, "Keep calm, OGC team. I say to you, you rock."
Thank you, General Counsel. Mrs. McQuinn?
I got my hand up early because when I had the opportunity to pre-read the presentation, it just reminded me of how much I appreciate the proactivity and the responsiveness to all that has been asked of you since you came on board. So, thank you for that, but also, I loved the three Cs. Now, I don't know if everybody got it, but I love the three Cs, and if you didn't, go back and look carefully, which led me to think about something I was adding to my remarks yesterday at the Ed Foundation when Board members had our, it was a taping for an upcoming event. So, it brought to mind, you know, I can't help this, you know, Finding Dory? Okay. And it was, "Keep on swimming." And I said it about our teachers because it's what they've done. I mean, they have just kept on swimming, but I thought, okay, this is very timely with the three Cs. Again, thank you so much, and now I can hear the litigator voice from Ms. Bernard. We usually hear, "I'm advising you," but this was that "get up there, litigate" voice. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you so much. I just want to take a minute to also echo my thanks to Ms. Bernard. I remember when you took on this job, and then I think we had a crisis like two minutes afterwards. So, it's been, it's been a really, and we have a crisis every week, so there's so much for you to deal with, and you've really done a fabulous job in handling it, and I just am so grateful. I think I talked to you at 8:30 last night. So, you know, all the late nights you spend, you know, helping to make sure that, you know, we're prepared for our meetings and that we understand some of the really tricky legal things that we've had to do here, I'm just particularly very grateful for, and I just want to say a huge thank you to your whole team. As Ms. McQuinn mentioned, your proactive nature and the things that your team has just been excited about and taken on just means so much to me because I'm seeing, you know, us as a leader in this state, and I think it's really because we have such a strong legal team behind us, and I just want to say a huge thank you to you and the whole team.
Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you, General Counsel Bernard. You really stepped right in. I want to say that when I call you, you're always there, and if you're not right there, you find a way to get to me as soon as you can to get the answers. And you stay pretty calm as you work us through the different issues as it relates to legal in the 10th-largest school district in the country. So, I appreciate that, but I love it that you participate in in-service staff training for yourself, as well as in-service staff training for all of the different departments within the building, because if we know what our legal rights are and how to manage ourselves and whatever position we're in here in the school district of Palm Beach County, it's a good thing for all of us. And I just want to let you know that I'm happy that you truly enjoy your job, the passion is coming out from your work that you do each day and continue to grow, but you worked under Ms. Rico, General Counsel Rico, you're her right-hand person, and as I see you continuing that process of learning from what you've learned in the past to keep us going in the present and in the future, keep up the great work. Thank you.
Let me ask you, General Counsel, we have two law academies, I believe, in the district, Palm Beach Lakes and Spanish River, and I know we're always looking for places for our kids to intern. Do you have some of those students from the law academies come into your office to have the opportunity to see what a real legal firm looks like?
We do, and we welcome our students to come in and intern with us. Due to COVID, we have, we've had to suspend that for a little bit, and we are working on creative ways to possibly bring that back, but in a remote fashion, if at all possible. But we welcome it. We've always had it for years, and we hope to be able to continue to have that open for our students.
Thank you. And I just want to, I want to thank you also. I know that it must be difficult for you to have a Board member that's also a lawyer, and I know we've had some, not as much as Mrs. Rico and I used to have, some pretty heated discussions, but I appreciate you asking for my input and working with me. I usually defer to you, but I thank you for at least giving me the opportunity to give you my input when we get some of these legal issues, so thank you. Any other Board members have any comments? Thank you, General Counsel. We need a motion to adjourn the workshop. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Call the special meeting to order. The record should reflect that all seven Board members are still here. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to add?
No.
And you have one item you're withdrawing?
Yes, I need to withdraw. Let me just pull it up real quick. Sorry, my computer's...
ELR1. ELR1.
Yes, I like to withdraw ELR1.
Board members, is there anything you want to pull from the agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Are there any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, do you have comments?
Yes, I do. All right. This past Saturday, September 11th, our community, like the entire nation, paused to reflect and remember terrific attacks that occurred 20 years ago. I remember that day. I was working here at the building, and, you know, back then, we had far fewer TVs in our offices, and employees, so employees were gathering around just, you know, wherever they could get a glimpse of the TV and just, you know, watched shocked and stunned and horror, and the, you know, the immediate focus was making sure our schools remained safe and secure. We had parents that were pulling their children out of school throughout the day in droves, and, you know, it doesn't seem, it's hard to believe it was 20 years ago. This past weekend, I, like many other people, I think we watched, you know, a lot of events on, at the national level on TV. We have also done things here locally in Palm Beach County. We had two nice ceremonies at our high schools through the ROTC programs. Forest Till High School last week had a very large commemoration event, and then on Saturday, Seminole Ridge High School in their junior ROTC also had a memorial, you know, commemorative service that Ms. Andrews was there to attend. I'd also like to recognize Frontier Elementary. They did a really nice project with their safety patrols where they put baskets together for first responders to just recognize their service. So, you know, every 9/11, we take the opportunity to recognize and honor the nearly 3,000 people that passed away that day tragically, and then also to honor our first responders, particularly our school police that we count on day in and day out to keep us safe. And some of those members, actually, of our school police department have come to us from New York after serving bravely on 9/11 themselves, both on the day of the event and in the weeks and months that followed in the recovery. So, just wanted to make sure we had that announcement. I'd also like to just acknowledge that tomorrow starts Hispanic Heritage Month. It'll run from September 15th to October 15th. Next week, at our, at our big meeting on the 22nd, when we had the full coverage, Ms. Ayala will be reading a proclamation, and, you know, we are very fortunate to have a vibrant Hispanic community in our, in our schools. It is, are now the largest portion of our student population, at nearly 40%, and growing. So, as Superintendent, I am committed to continuing to work to ensure that all of our students have a true exposure, appreciation of the contributions of the Hispanic community, not just during this Hispanic Heritage Month, but every day in every classroom. Numerous activities are planned on campuses across our district over the next month, and you will continue to see those tributes shared in our electronic newsletters, social media, TV, and our district website. That concludes my comments. Chairman Barbieri?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mrs. McQuinn?
I'm a little out of my element with this, and Ms. Evans met with me before this meeting. She keeps coaching me on Florida Palm, the public assets for liquidity management. It's like I used to teach my students, and I'd say, "How do you not get this? I've taught it over and over," and so now I get it because she keeps teaching me. But I do want to share with you, I decided not to incorporate my comments about Florida Palm when we actually get to a finance presentation later in the month. And I know when Mr. Shaw used to present about this, I listened carefully, and I thought I got it. So, I am starting an introduction after Mr. Shaw to all of you. So, Florida Palm is a local government investment pool formed in December of '09 for school districts, and I will tell you that former Board Member Bill Graham was the first chair, and then until his leaving the Board, Chuck Shaw, and they are trying very hard to coach me up on this, but then it was expanded from school districts to include other local governments to stabilize cash flows. And as Ms. Evans explained, you know, in her fiscal year she has to deal with, there can be cash flow, I'm not calling, they're not emergencies at all, she'll panic if I say that word, situations when she has to meet payroll, et cetera, and so this stabilizes any cash flow issues that, of course, we have never had. She wanted me to talk about training. I'll skip that piece because I totally get it yet, but I do want you to know, because Mr. Shaw used to stress this, the pool has grown from 2009 from $0 to $2.4 billion under very safe investment management strategies. So, thank you for bearing with me. I'm getting better at this.
Thank you, Mrs. McQuinn. Ms. Ayala?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much for recognizing the start of Hispanic Heritage Month tomorrow. I encourage everybody to go out and support a Hispanic-owned business in our community to honor the contributions made by them, but I wanted to talk about something I got to do last Friday, and the Superintendent joined me there as well. On September 10th, we were invited to Benoy Farms Elementary in District Two to take part in an only-one U-Day. in an Only One You Day. On that day, the children were taught that everyone is different, but that we embrace those differences by reading a book titled "Only One You." In order for them to be able to show their differences and understand them, they... We ended the morning by painting a rock in their own unique way, and you can see us there joining them in that. It was a bit messy, but very fun. And a rock garden was created in front of the school to empower the children to remember that day when they came together and embraced their differences and celebrated them and how unique they are. So the rocks will be placed in the garden in the front of the school and displayed for all to see. So I wanted to thank Principal Dr. Miller for having me out there, and to the whole team for putting this together for our students to celebrate their diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Mrs. Whitfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I have a few things. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, a special thank you to Simply Health for the purchase of 10,000 digital thermometers for each student in the Glades region. A special thank you goes out to the Education Foundation for unpacking all of those boxes of thermometers and repacking the boxes in beautiful, beautiful wrappings as we got ready to deliver to each school in the Glades region. The school nurse, you're our hero. You're in all of our schools. You're taking care of all of our students as it relates to their health needs. You were there. We presented you that box. And sometimes schools had five and six boxes, depending on how many children they had in their school. And we saluted the school nurse. Region Superintendent Angela Moore was there, along with her team, the Tri-Cities Education Committee, the elected officials of mayors and councilmen. They all rode in this little caravan, starting with the big truck from the Education Foundation, the Simply Health van, and all of our cars. We went throughout Belle Glades, South Bay, and Pahokee, and we visited every school. And we left a wonderful digital thermometer for each student. Now the students can look at their health each and every day before they go to school, throughout the day when they're home. Each child in the Glades region will have this thermometer. And Simply Health wants to reach out to the east part of Palm Beach County School District. Dr. Robinson, as well as others, to Riviera Beach, because they want to make sure that every child that needs a digital thermometer within their home gets one. So I'll provide more information to you on that. And as Mr. Burke said, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to be at Seminole Ridge High School to see the junior ROTC present the special 9/11 ceremony commemorating 20 years since the attacks on our country. The reading of the names, the brief history of each person, it just touched your heart. As I saw the students talk about the different individuals who lost their lives and saw the reactions of the people, we will never forget. We thank everyone from our armed services to our police offices to our first responders, everybody that helped on that day. But unfortunately, so many lost their lives, so we will never forget. And on last night, the Royal Palm Beach Educational Advisory Board met. Thank you, Mr. Tierney, for being there with the principals from the central region, Valerie Haynes, all of her team. You're always out there at these educational advisory meetings to make sure that the community, the parents, understand what's going on within our district. And Superintendent Burke, a message was reared for you. It was said that tell the superintendent, tell the school board, "We're here." The Village of Royal Palm Beach Education Advisory Board and community is here, Mr. Burke and team, to help us and support us as we work to help keep children safe and healthy throughout this pandemic. And this morning was no different, a beautiful meeting with the Glades Career Readiness Round Table. We're still meeting virtual. I was able to travel there to the Glades, but we still have to protect everybody. So the superintendent, your team, was there, and we... This was our 84th meeting since we began meeting with the round table. Eighty-four times we've met to help the Glades region get to where they need to be as it relates to academic achievement, as it relates to equity, as it relates to community involvement, for making sure every child has a wonderful education. So I want to thank Mr. Burke and his team for being in attendance, and thank all the members of the round table for always giving your service. These are business officials, parents, elected officials, community leaders, all of them. They come together once a month to take care of the needs of the Glades region. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
So thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Burke and Mr. Oswald for participating in a Zoom session last night for the community to really provide additional information, background, knowledge on COVID. This came about after, actually, a couple of principals asked me if I would do such a thing just so that people could have more clarity on a number of subtopics contained under the overall topic of COVID. And so I just want to thank both Mr. Burke and Mr. Oswald for their participation. I also want to really thank our partners in terms of the Healthcare District, Health Department, and Palm Beach County, as well as the group that I call the All-Star Cast. And so I just want to thank them by name. So we had Dr. Katanga Camenyo, who is an infectious disease physician, who, by the way, went to Howard University College of Medicine, just so you know. And then we had Roshan McCray, who is an infectious disease nurse practitioner, who in fact was in scrubs and full PPE while participating in our Zoom. Dr. Joe Etienne, who is also an infectious disease physician. Wilmusu Jones, who is a nephrology nurse. We had Dr. Colette Brown Graham, who's an OB-GYN, and gave a very informative and impassioned talk about COVID as it relates to pregnancy. We had Andrea Stevenson, Executive Director of the Health Council of Southeast Florida. And then yours truly. Mr. Oswald shared the decision trees that we have, so that information would be spread more broadly. And of course, we had questions and answers. We... Of course, we went overtime because anything I do doesn't stay on schedule, but we got rave reviews. I actually thought it was too nerdy, maybe, for people. And at some points in time, like we tend to do, the doctors were talking to each other. But it appears that so-called John Q. Public really, really appreciated listening to that conversation and receiving that information. And we've been asked to do more. So it was recorded. It will be uploaded to YouTube, I think probably by the Health Council of Southeast Florida. It's actually on their Facebook page, if you're interested in seeing it. But I think it was quite informative, and I just want to thank everybody that participated, and we'll figure out which ones we do next. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Vice Chairwoman Brill?
Thank you. And so I always appreciate hearing everybody's comments, and particularly today, hearing those of you who also mentioned Patriot's Day. For me, it's really hard to believe that 20 years have passed since the horrific attacks of 9/11 that changed the world we're living in. For many of us, myself included, it was the first time we realized that even at home in our great nation, we are not safe from terrorism. Our innocence was stolen from us. Our hearts were broken. The images of the attacks and the memory of the shock and fear are as vivid in my mind today as they were that day. I still cry when I see videos of the events that played out in my hometown of New York City, Washington, DC, and Pennsylvania. It felt so personal to me. Like many New Yorkers, I lost friends that day. Our lives would never be the same again. 9/11 was the day that instilled in me a patriotism that I really never previously acknowledged. It gave me profound appreciation for what our first responders, our firefighters, police, ambulance drivers, rescue workers, all of you do for us each and every day. And it is a day that changed us. It is a day that brought us closer. It is a day that made us pull together, proud to be Americans. To those of you working for the school district of Palm Beach County who were first responders or assisted in the weeks, months, and years that followed, we cannot thank you enough. I cannot thank you enough. I do hope that one day we will again unite together, proud to be Americans, without the divisiveness that we are experiencing today. And I hope that occurs without having to suffer such tragic losses again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. I just have one comment. I just want to welcome a new appointee to the academic... To the Boundary Committee. I appointed City Councilwoman from Boca, Yvette Drucker. She'll be taking that seat on a, probably, the committee that gets the most abuse from the public. So I welcome her to that, and I've warned her what she's in for. That'll take us to... We have no speakers. It's amazing. We need a motion, unless anybody wants to pull anything from consent? Approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That meeting is adjourned. Call the meeting... Oh, 5:05. Oh. We got... Yes, we got done too quickly. So we can't take the budget meeting until 5:05, so we'll break until 5:05.